I'm going to call the Clay County Board of Commissioners meeting for January 23rd to order. First item we've got is the approval of the agenda.
Move that through.
We have an addition.
Yes, oh, we do have an addition.
What's the addition? Yes.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Citizens to be heard. Any citizens to be heard on the issue that's not on the agenda. Steve, we got anybody?
Nothing, Mr. Chair.
Alrighty.
I want to recognize them.
One thing on the agenda, I do want to thank Johnson's Auto Repair for their donation to the Mayor's Department and Morehead Police Department K-9 programs. We appreciate their support. Next on the agenda, approval of bills and vouchers.
I'm going to approve.
Second.
Motion, second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Next item on the agenda is Resolution 2024-5, authorizing the issuance, awarding sale, prescribing the form and detail, and providing for the payment of $6,450,000 general obligation capital improvement plan bond, 2024A. Steve?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. As you recall, back in December 12th, this board issued a public hearing on the adoption of a capital improvement plan and the question of issuing the general obligation capital improvement plan bonds in the mail not to exceed $6.45 million for the purpose of financing our DMV. During that open hearing, there were no issues that were brought forward in either the adoption of the plan or issuing of the bonds, and so this board made the determination it was in the best interest of the county to issue the general obligation bonds, Series 2024A for the project and the cost of the issuance of the bonds. This morning, we have Todd Hagan, the Senior Municipal Advisor from Ellerson, to share with you the findings of our bond sale and the recommendations set forth in Resolution Welcome, Todd.
Great, thank you, Steve. Hello there, Board of Commissioners. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yep, loud and clear.
Great, great, yeah. Thanks for having me remote again. I had a late night town board meeting up by Princeton, so I would have rolled in at 2:00 a.m., so I appreciate it. So, yeah, we, as Steve said, we, you know, we had the pre-sale on November 14th, setting up for the public hearing before Christmas, and all went well, and going down the path to issue these bonds for the DMV facility, using unspent bond proceeds from a prior bond, and then bonding for the rest. So, I just, I tell you, I love it when a plan comes together. I tell you, this is all good news, and hopefully you're good with this. So, I have a sale day report in front of the county board. It does have the bid tabulation attached to it, how the bids came in before noon yesterday, because you have an early morning meeting today, and then the final bond schedule, the payment schedule, also the rating report, you know, we went in for standard and poor rating again, we can talk about that a little bit as well, and the bond buyer index graph at the end of that kind of shows that, you know, we're starting to kind of go down with interest rates, I don't know. Thanks for being so smart and striking when rates are going down a little bit, so that's great. It's good to have a crystal ball, ha ha. Anyway, so, again, the bids came in by noon yesterday, and before I go over that, I want to say that the county did maintain their double A, stable bond rating. Congratulations on that. Steve and Lori were on the phone call with S&amp;P, can't remember, some of the analysts were from Colorado and Chicago and, I don't know, maybe California, I'm not sure, but they're familiar with the county. Did a little update with those folks, you know, we hadn't been rated since 2021, so we updated the analysts with the 2020, 2021, 2022 audits, budget for '23, kind of how you landed in '23, and then your economic outlook. So, just take another, you know, quick update with those folks. Lori and Steve did a great job of follow-up, but we had a nice prep call to just our team to kind of get ready for that call. They gave us the questions ahead of time, which was nice, and then they took it to committee and gave you folks the double A stable again, so congratulations with that. The analyst did note that she appreciated the clarification we gave them on your market-to-market investment value, you know, just the value goes up and down before maturity on a lot of your investments, and, you know, if you looked at it in any given year, it might be a little down, it might be a little up, so we clarified that for them, and that's pretty common with the way the market's been kind of volatile lately on investments, and also noted that your reserves are improving, they're going back up after 2023, so that was all very helpful for that analyst in her credit committee reporting. So, that's all good on that. Just the highlights on the credit report, too, that, you know, anytime you have the word strong in there or very strong, it's very strong is the top-notch that you can get from the rating agency as far as their methodology reporting, so your economy has been noted as being strong, your budgetary flexibility, you know, available reserves very strong that way, very strong liquidity, you can get at the money when you need to, and you can kind of cross-reference amongst your three major funds. Also, you have very strong debts and long-term liabilities, so not much debt out there in comparison to your value with the county, and then you have a very strong institutional framework, and they just basically compare you with other counties and municipalities of your size in the state of Minnesota, so those are good pluses. Keep your reserve levels up, keep building those, cash is important, even though you borrow every once in a while, like in our personal lives, it's nice to have some money set aside that always looks good, right, when we're borrowing money. So, that's just a quick synopsis of the rating report, and it all landed as expected, so we appreciate the efforts of staff helping and helping out with that analysis. So, back to the sale day report and the bid tabulation, so we received six bids yesterday on the bond issue, we did have seven set up. We had one that didn't bid, Key Bank Capital Markets, just kind of an interesting FYI, we had in Minnesota, four sales out there in Minnesota, two school districts with some larger bond issues, City of Morehead had, I don't know, 27 million out there also, and then, of course, Clay County, and yours was, out of the four, was the only one that was considered bank-qualified, and that means that if banks participated in this, even with a broker-dealer or an underwriter, that they have the ability to deduct a large portion of their interest expense or carrying costs to buy the bonds, not only tax example, federal and state, but they also have the ability to deduct some of that, too, so that brings your interest rate down some, so I liked the competition yesterday, and also I like that Clay County was the only bank-qualified one out there, too. So Baird out of Milwaukee was the best bid at 3.2040 true interest cost. If you look at that bid, they had 27 syndicate members, you can recognize some of those, Collier Securities, Edward Jones was part of the group, Oppenheimer, and you kind of go down the list, and very, there are a lot of folks sharpening their pencils underneath Baird. I can't tell you who all took what, but a lot of times they kind of just split it evenly throughout the bond issue maturity. And that bid was actually, I tell you, I've never seen this before, 159 basis points, or 1.59% lower than our projection in our pre-sale report on November 14th, so again, you can kind of see where the market's been and where it is, and we're happy to see that that was a much lower interest rate than what we had projected. Second bid was from Northland Securities, they negotiated a lot of bonds, and they were at 3.2%. Piper Sandler, we recognize those folks, at 3.23%. UBS Financial out of New York, 3.27%, Stifel Nicolaus out of Birmingham, Alabama, 3.3% in Hilltop Securities out of Dallas, Texas, at 3.3%. So, any one of those bids would have just, you know, wiped out our projections, so we were happy with all the participation in this bond issue, and it was a pretty tight bidding, I mean, 3.2 to 3.34, so everybody was hitting the mark yesterday, and nobody threw us a bone, so any one of these would have been great, but Baird wins, and they would be our recommendation to go with for the award of the sale. So, just another interesting way things sort of priced yesterday, too, is, and you folks have seen this before, but you probably can't remember, but a lot of these bids, especially, I think every one of these bids, and all bids that we've seen on larger bond issues in the last few years have bid with a premium bid, so they actually give us more money than what we need. In exchange, they get a higher interest rate stamped on their bond. If you look at the winning bid from Baird, you'll see a re-offering yield, you'll see a coupon rate, so you'll pay the coupon rate, and the investor gets the re-offering yield, and the difference between the two is what we call premium, and that comes from the customers of Baird. So, whoever gets in and buys these in the secondary market gives them money. We use the cash then to lower the bond issue down, and so we, in effect, get to that yield, even though you pay the higher interest rate, the coupon rate on there, we have a lot less bonds, you know, to pay on, so that brings the effective interest rate down. So, we did lower the bond by $770,000, yes, $770,000. So, your bond issue is not at 6.45 million anymore, it's at 5.68 million dollars. So, not only did we use the unspent proceeds from that 2017 B-bond to help lower the borrowing, we're also using that premium or cash from their customers to lower the bond issue as well, so the cost of issuance came down, the underwriter fee came down, the capitalized interest that's bond-funded, because this is going to be budgeted for the next budget cycle, that came down because the bond issue went down, so we're paying less interest on this, and you're still getting $6.5 million to pay for the project. How's that for magic, right? So, yeah, 5.68 million to finance 6.5 million of project costs. I think that's it for my presentation this morning, and I'll yield to the board if you have any questions, but if you like what you see, there's a resolution in front of the board for you to consider at awards the sale to Baird and issues the bonds, the county's bonds.
Any questions for Mr. Hagan? Mr. Hagan, looks like you have five satisfied commissioners here. This was very good news. I think it reflects well on our staff and on Steve, and on the commissioners here who have consistently been good stewards of public funding, and this is for a really good project. So, I'm open for a motion on...
Chair, I'd move Resolution 2024-05.
One second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair, I also just want to point out the great work that Ms. Johnson does, and also thank Todd for leading us through another successful bond process.
Indeed. We appreciate it, Todd.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the business, yeah.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. The resolution passes.
All right. Thanks so much, I appreciate it. It's fun working with you folks. Until we meet again, have a good meeting.
Looking forward to it. Thank you.
Good week, Todd.
That's how easy it is to spend money.
Yeah.
Like that.
We're not spending as much as we thought we would.
Yeah.
Okay, next on the agenda, presentation of the Clay County Early Childhood Initiative Longest Table. And Nicole Flick, organizer.
Okay, so we have a video that we want to show you. We first brought the Longest Table to the Morehead-Dillworth communities as a way to get our residents to sit down next to each other, meet a neighbor you've never met before, and share a meal. Tonight, we have well over 150 people gathering to share a meal together. We made sure that that meal was inclusive of different allergy and food needs, so that everyone would feel welcome gathering at the table together. Our first Longest Table event was in 2019. Unfortunately, then we had a pandemic, and that really put the kibosh on things for a couple of years. One of our focuses is to make sure that this event is safe for all community members to attend. So, here we are, back in 2023, with great attendance, a very diverse representation of neighbors gathering together to learn about each other, learn about each other's families, struggles, and successes. A unique aspect of the Longest Table in Morehead and Dillworth is that the tables themselves are given away as door prizes at the end of the event, so that neighbors can carry this model into their own neighborhoods and share a meal, getting to know people right around where they live. This is a great way to bring community together. We only know about our personal story, our walk-in life, but when you sit next to someone and you hear about their challenges, their successes, how their family is doing, that's one way that we can really create community, we can build connection, and we can make this the best place to raise your family.
Yes.
Yeah, I just want to point out, we also have Jody Georgette, and she's our coordinator for the early childhood initiative.
All right. Jody?
So, I'm Nicole Flick. I own ABC 123 Child and Richmond Center in Dillworth. I also own Chill in Dillworth, and I also own Kenley Properties in Morehead. This is Jody Georgette, Georgette. She is the Clay County Early Childhood Initiative Coordinator, and we are the organizers of the Longest Table. So, basically, we're just presenting today to kind of explain the outcome of the 2023 Longest Table, and then let you know of the date for the 2024, which is June 27th. It'll be hosted at M-State, hopefully outside this year, and we are inviting you all to attend.
One thing we do at the Longest Table is, not only do we bring the community together, but we ask pointed questions via our tablecloths that people can weigh in on things that are important to them about the city, the cities that they live in, and Morehead and Dillworth are the cities that we focus on for this. So, the tablecloths are made of paper, and we write questions on them and let people write their answers all over the table. We take those tablecloth answers and combine them into what you have in front of you today and this PowerPoint that Nicole will go through. So, it's a way to bring people together, but also let them feel heard.
So, we've met the two, I guess, major people of our team. Mary Ann Smith is a professional development advisor at CAP LP. Heather Niesmeyer is a Morehead City Council member, and then Sarah Dixon Hackey is the diversity, equity, and inclusion liaison for Clay County as well, so she's also on our team. There were two main things that were written on almost every table, one of them being the community seems to lack affordable housing. People struggle to find affordable housing and also maintain it. Of course, the second one was access to affordable childcare. That's been heard, I don't know, everywhere, but being able to find childcare spots and then being able to afford the care once they have it are the two biggest things that we heard. Some other things, incentives for small businesses to come to the area, people kind of wanted to see more restaurants, retail, anything that can get them to this side of the river. Transportation access was a big one, the Sunday transportation for people who don't drive, so they can attend religious events or work. Green space, parks, and community centers were a big one, families want to spend time outside and with other families. And working streetlights and recycling were written a lot. Apparently, Morehead doesn't have very many working streetlights, and...
Or at least some parts of Morehead.
Some parts of Morehead. And so, apparently, the community doesn't know how to let you know that, and so this is kind of why we're here, so we can get that word out. But also, they also wanted to see compost glass and yard recycling bins, which, just letting you know that. So, what we're asking of you is participation and possibly representation at our next event. We're always looking for volunteers, table hosts to lead the conversation, promoting the event via your social media as your resources to the people you know. You guys are the connections between Morehead and Dillworth, so we're always looking for those connections. We are grant-funded program, so anytime we can be aware of grants or other dollars to help promote or fund the event, that's always great, and then participation and implement of the improvement of suggestions from the event. Last year, we offered childcare. We had about 40 children who took to use the childcare, so we plan to do that again this year, and that's something that we paid for out of our budget, so we are looking for help with that as well. And that is it.
Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mojo.
Thank you for your presentation and the work. I know it's a large lift to make this happen, so thank you for that. In thinking about trying to make sure that we get the feedback that you're receiving from participants and apply them to an area in which we can see change, wanting, do you have the comments that you had on the tablecloths in like a spreadsheet form?
Kind of, yes.
And the reason I'm asking is MetroCog does so many different community input surveys that all the municipalities take as we look at plans, and particularly with the streetlight comment, and I think it would be really helpful to forward that on, and, you know, if you could forward that spreadsheet to Steve, and, you know, I'm thinking about probably three or four committees that I serve on that those feedbacks would be helpful on, making sure that we help you get the comments from the community out, because so often, I always say I can't advocate for something that I don't know about, and so if we have citizens giving comments, I want to make sure that we are forwarding those on. My other comment, or question, rather, comes in regards to the meal itself. Are you sourcing from local growers? How do you get the food for the table?
So, in 2019, we used the Dillworth Lions because we used the Dillworth Community Center. We were going to use them again, but they don't have a catering license.
Okay.
So, we had, it was a last minute, like, three weeks before the event, we didn't have a caterer, so we ended up going with Jay's Smoke &amp; Barbecue. It came out of our budget, they did donate part of their time, like, Jay was actually there handing out food. So, we do plan to go with them again, so we don't have to pay to reprint the menus. It was gluten-free, it was vegan...
And translated.
And it was translated into five different languages, so they agreed for the date, we've already booked them, so we do plan to use them again.
Okay.
Going forward...
Going forward, yeah. We're hoping for whatever. Going forward in the future, we're open to change for that, and we would love anything, any ideas for that as well. Yeah, budget-wise, we thought it's smart to stay with Jay's, plus they did a great job for this coming year, but we're open. We're open, we're planning to do this every year. Eventually, we hope somebody takes the reins on it, it doesn't have to be the Early Childhood Initiative, because it's a bigger thing than that, but it was started with the dream of Jenna, the one that you saw talking throughout the video, and she's part of the Early Childhood Initiative, and so, yeah, but it's bigger than early childhood, it's community-wide, and we're here today just to make sure that people do feel heard. We had a few people actually ask us, you know, when we write these things on the table, does it go anywhere, you know, and so we know that you and the city councils and your people that can make that happen, so we can get a spreadsheet or present to other places as well.
May I name? Yeah, and thank you for coming today. These two are the go-getters out of the group, so it's good to have them present. I also just, you know, they've done, through the work of that planning committee, great work in getting really some good sponsors for the event and backing it. It's about a $7,500 budget for the event, and I think, what we were saying, maybe use around five grand of it this year, so...
Yeah, we used 55...
Oh, those go back to those, pardon?
We used 5560 last year.
Very good. But I just know, it's nice to have, you know, mainly the banks and the other sponsors that join in on this, too, so, yeah, encouraging more leadership from all our entities to be part of it, and I think June's a better month to have it.
Yeah, we did September last year, and that was really hard with back-to-school and everything. It was just really hard. So, yeah, thank you for letting us present, it means a lot to us, and we hope to see you there, if anyone wants to join our planning committee. We just, we meet mostly via Zoom until the last week-ish, and then we meet, you know, in person a couple of times.
Jody's email's on the bottom of the...
Yep, my email's on there. Any questions?
We appreciate your presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is this a late afternoon deal or evening or...
Thank you for the question.
Yeah, so it usually starts at about 5:30. There's, we usually send out an Eventbrite to register, and we get your meal requirements and how many people. We don't usually send that out for a couple of months before, but...
Thank you.
Thanks. Next on the agenda, we've got a request for grade increase for lead counselors in the secure program. Director James O'Donnell is with us today. James?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Yeah, I'm here today to request a grade change from a line 16 to a line 17 for one position that has two staff in it in our secure unit. Currently, those staff are paid at what's called a lead counselor pay, so they're paid $1.50 when they're in that role, extra on top of their line 16. Today, I'm just requesting to move that to just a straight line 17, which is necessary considering the significant duties between the line 16 and this lead counselor role and the duties that they're expected to accomplish. They have to be very knowledgeable, and they're the go-to person on the evenings, and with questions that staff has, reassurances that staff has, grievances that kids have, grievances that parents have, you know, initial ones, if they can't be issued, then the supervisor can do that, but a lot of them can be taken care of by this line lead that's there currently. Has anybody got any questions? Again, it's for my secure unit. Back in July, it was approved by the advisory board for that secure unit, and it went through PIC last week, so...
No question, but just a comment that we brought this up at the PIC, and we thought it was a good plan that they came up with, you know, get all the people that they have on staff there that they need, a couple of lead people to help them out, so we thought it was a good plan for them.
The presence of supervision just makes things a lot easier for a decision to be made and for people to feel supported in their decisions there. I think it's a good plan, too. We did discuss it in PIC, and it was well-received. Commissioner Campbell?
Yeah, this was also talked about at our, with...
Yeah, this was also talked about at our, with our member entities regarding this, and they also agreed that it was a proper, proper thing to do. So with that, I would, I would move the request to, for the two lead counselor positions to move from grade 16 to grade 17.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thanks, James.
Thank you very much.
Next, we've got request approval, discontinue electronic document management systems, EDMS hosting. And Rory Schmidt, our technology service director, will present.
Good morning, Chris. Thank you. Today, I'm proposing that we discontinue hosting services for our electronic document management system caseworks for the social services unit. This hosting environment has been designated to Clay County since late 2012, so we've had it for about 14 years now. And just with some recent events and advisement of legal counsel and insurance, potential price hikes because of this hosting environment, we are proposing today that we discontinue service by the end of the year, December 31, 2024.
Discussion. Commissioner Mojo?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate when departments look at different ways to provide service to the community, and sometimes collaborating with other counties seems to make a lot of sense. And sometimes, when it grows, it doesn't make any sense anymore, and the reality is our first chief goal is to provide the best service to the citizens of Clay County that we can. And so, while I appreciate the fact that your department has really taken this on and done this over the years, and it's been, it seems to have gone well, it no longer seems to make the most sense. So thank you for coming to that realization and bringing it to our attention, but again, our job is to promote, promote initiatives that make the most sense for Clay County, so thank you.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yeah, I, I, I want to go a little bit further than, you know, obviously, we want to, we want to thank our, all of these other entities that did work with us in this process. But in this day and age, right now, cybersecurity is significantly important, and it's, you know, and I think it's, it can be asking too much of our own entity to be covering all of these cybersecurity issues for, you know, when you, what are we, we're hosting like 20 counties?
Yep, 20.
You know, it gets to be an awful lot of, you know, and I think that puts pressure on our own staff, and I'm glad this recommendation is coming forward. It's unfortunate that it has to come forward, but at the same point in time, with the target that's on everybody right now in the, in the world of cybersecurity, it's, we need to minimize our risks, and I think we heard him say that as advisement of our attorneys and our insurance company, it just, it's something that we really need to do.
Yep, and I will mention, too, in the last few years here, we've averaged about $50,000 to $60,000 in revenue for this.
Well, it'll be revenue missed, but at the same point in time, it's, there's risk with that.
Yes.
What I add to that, this isn't going to be a surprise, gotcha, for the other counties. We've got, they've got till the end of the year, and there are resources for them to.
Correct, yep, the vendor, Next Chapter Technology, they have a hosting platform themselves, otherwise each individual county can host it at their respective county as well.
So this won't leave anybody
No.
short?
Nope, correct.
Any other questions?
We had a good discussion on the PIC, and I agree with what he's doing, and I'd make a motion that we approve this.
Second the motion.
Okay, have motion, second. Further discussion? If not all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? Okay, very good. Thank you, Rory.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, Joe Olson, Facilities Director, request approval to rename the Building Maintenance Department.
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chair and Board members. We visited with PIC last week, I believe, on this, and I, two years ago, we had restructured our department and attached with, I believe you have in your packet, it's kind of just a snapshot layout of how we function, and we're feeling that building maintenance doesn't actually capture everything that this department does, and Facilities Department is what we felt does, so we had taken this to PIC, and we feel that this is just a more appropriate name, I guess. I have anything more on it, but.
One thing we did discuss in PIC, it's not going to change any stationary, any monument signs. There's really no transition cost to this, is there?
Right, not much, just the internal staff time, and that shouldn't be too much.
Any questions for Joe?
Oh, it's just another thing that we discussed at PIC, and, I mean, his first choice was Cho's Place, but we went with.
Exactly.
Coordinated, so I'm making a motion that we approve this.
I'll second that.
Have motion and second. Any questions or comments? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thanks, Joe.
Yep, you bet.
Okay, next on the agenda, Joe is going to have a request to approve, for approval of mileage, charge increase for county checkout vehicles.
Yes, so just a little back history on this. During the budgeting process, we worked with Lori on this. We're talking checkout vehicles here only, so the 13 vehicles, the mailroom checks out. And the reason for this, this has not been adjusted since 2010, and what we're doing is, I think the current rate is 35 cents a mile, and talking with Lori, we feel that bumping it up to 50 cents is more in line with what it costs to rent out and maintain vehicles. Where, what this will do is, this will add an additional $24,679 to Fund 50, the overall Internal Services Fund, so I think hindsight, or I think moving forward, we will add this with Darren's request that he does every year with the Internal Services, or the IRS thing, so it's a yearly thing. Ross will take a look every year to see how Fund 50 is and how Lori would like to see that done and make adjustments if needed, so.
Questions?
I don't really have a question, but I have some comments, and I guess, first off, I mean, it's nice to see that you're going to have $24,679 more revenue coming to your department, but there's also going to be that much less in
Yes.
their county departments.
Yes, yep. Yeah, exactly, yeah, it's not.
So it's, you know, it has been, but I guess what I'm wondering here is, you know, I know we compare going, this hasn't been raised since 2010, but we also have done some other things since 2010 to bring the price of vehicle operations down.
Yes, yes.
We went from buying vehicles to a lease project, which
Yep.
yourself has come in and said, that's really.
It saved us a lot of money. Yes, yep.
You know, so I guess I'm just, you know, I'm wondering, you know, that's what I'm wondering about it.
Sure.
I'm concerned, you know, that these other departments now have to add
Yes, yep.
additional expense to them.
Yep, a couple things there, Commissioner Campbell, is during the budgeting process, each one of these departments did adjust their budgets, so that is there, but it is more, like you say, I think the idea is we've sold all our vehicles and we are paying for the leases right now, but the idea is, like, just for example, just do simple numbers, we have, it costs me, it costs roughly $83,000 to lease the vehicles by, we usually have roughly 160,000 miles, but that could give or take each year, so we roughly have about that same amount bringing in. In another year and a half, we'll sell our vehicles, and we'll have that projected, what is worth at that time, too. So I think there's a few variables here, and that's why Lori and I feel that we should every year take a look at, or is it a year, we're selling our vehicles, what are we going to get back for that, and make adjustments. I think she just feels that this year, bringing that up would at least plan for this.
When you say sell, are these leased or owned?
Le, no, they're leased, but we do get the equity back. So when I say sell, we get the equity back. So just roughly estimated cost is 220,000 we should get when we sell in year three, and that's what we're projecting to come back in a year and a half when this happens, so we take that, and we say, how is that, how is that affect, I don't want to call it Fund 50, because it's, you know, Internal Services, but it's the fleet portion of Fund 50. And so we take a look at that, and we take a look at what departments are paying, and see each year we make our adjustments, rather than one big hike. I think that's just, so this was a number Lori had said for this year to do, so.
I think I've asked that before about,
Yeah.
you know, how can we show on paper?
Yep, yep.
Our, when we made the switch from purchasing to leasing?
Yep, yep.
And how did that impact us annually?
Exactly, yeah. We definitely will have a really nice shot when we do our first cycle through, because that'll tell us what, you know, what the, you know, it depends on how much miles are on these vehicles, but just by averaging what it is, that'll give us our first real snapshot, but, I mean, when we sold our used vehicles, we made a lot of money off that, and that really gave us a head start. So that, right off the top, is, I think, saving us money in the beginning, so, but during my department review, I can try to put something together that really makes more sense, too, so.
Well, I mean, obviously, it's, you know, I think if it's determined that we still have to invest into the Internal Service Fund to, I'm assuming that's to make the upfront payment on these leases?
It would be more like year three. Usually, when you sell, like we did recently, we bought ourselves two years almost here with lease payments, and then when you come into that year three, you've used what you have, and that, that money that we've put aside for two years will help with, with that third year, making that payment, and then you go, you sell that fleet and kind of recycle that money back. So it's kind of a ongoing recycle, and that's how enterprise is projecting, and that's how you save your money, is by doing that, so.
Commissioner Kravonoff?
Joe, just so I heard it correctly then, so the other departments were aware of this coming as they put their
Correct.
budget together for this year?
Yep, adjustments were made in their budgets during the budget process.
So they aren't taking a hit on any other
Right, right, this is.
On other parts of their business.
Yes, exactly, and this is a little, this is an exact science, because some departments can drive less or more every year, too, so that's how that is.
And then the other piece is, when this money comes into you then, is it kind of as a line item that goes toward vehicles?
Yes, yep.
And then that is part of the
Exactly.
whole program alone?
Right, Lori, Lori has a breakdown within her Internal Services that can tell me what my, what the fleets are doing.
Okay.
Yep, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Commissioner Gross?
Does each department get charged according to how much they use?
Yeah.
Or they just?
Yep, so when they check out a vehicle, they'll, they'll turn in a mileage slip, and we know exactly how many miles they did that day, and then we turn around and bill their depart, bill their department, so same as any other bill that comes to them, they bill it, and then that revenue comes back every month.
So it's based on usage, okay.
Yeah, definitely based on usage, too, so. And the other thing, too, is why we're going to adjust a little bit, is because in year three, when you go and you, you know, right now, we have a set, you know, cost $630 a month to lease a traverse, it may cost a little bit more in three years, because, you know, the price to lease things or buy obviously go up in three years, so a little, we're trying to account a little bit for that as well, so it, kind of, lot, lot of variables in this, but that's what we're.
I'll make a motion to increase.
Have motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, indicate, sing aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion passes. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Board.
Okay, we have our county engineer, Justin Sorum. Next item is request approval to fill highway maintenance worker position.
Yes, good morning. So I'm here this morning to request approval to fill a recent opening that we have due to an employee leaving, so this is one of our maintenance workers out of the joint facility, and I'm just looking to back, or to fill the open position.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion passes. Okay, Justin, next will be request approval to advertise for SAP 014-626-032.
Yes, so this is requesting approval to advertise, this is a mill and overlay project on CASA 26, and this is from CASA 19 to Trunk Highway 75, about nine and a half miles, so it's a pretty big project. My proposed letting date would be March 5.
Any questions or comments?
I'll offer a motion to approve.
Second.
Have motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, indicate with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Passes.
Yeah, so the, I can take this one. The next item is requesting approval of a final contract voucher, so the four box culvert projects that were completed in the summer of 2023, two townships and two county projects. So I have four different totals for each project, so I'll start with SAP 598-073. So the final amount to be approved today would be 179,948.0. The second project is SAP 14-598-074. Final amount to be approved would be 196,700.0. The next one is a township project, SAP 14-599-107. Final amount to be approved would be 288,264.0. And the final one is another township project, SAP 14-599-113. And the final amount to be approved is 346,801.75. So these projects were bid in 2022, and box culvert production was really, really hampered, so they were constructed in '23, and I think all the projects turned out really well, and I think they were four really good projects.
Very good. Any observations or comments, questions?
Just a curiosity question, were the bridges all wood?
No, so the one in Cromwell Township was a metal pipe that was, two different types of metal pipe kind of welded together, and they were failing because it is a very deep pipe. Two of them were wooden, and then one was an old concrete structure.
Okay, and I'm just curious, when these go in, do you put a new, you do a raise at the same time on the roads, as they've gone down toward the streams, or is it go back in at the same level?
So it all depends on the project. So the one in Cromwell Township, we had to raise the road a little bit, just because it was on a vertical curve that did not meet a 30 mile an hour condition. Most of them are on, like, two of them were on watershed ditches where the road didn't raise at all.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other question? Commissioner Campbell?
I don't have any questions. Mr. Chair, I would move final contract vouchers for SAP 14-598-073 in the amount of 1 million, or 179,948. SAP 014-598-04 in the amount of 196,700.
074. You forgot the seven, 074.
Oh, 074, I thought it, okay. SAP 014-599-107 in the amount of 288,264.0 and 0 cents, and SAP 014-599-113 in the amount of 346,801.75.
Second the motion.
Okay, have motion, second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, aye?
Good way to spend a million dollars.
No, no problem. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion passes.
Yes, and the final item I have is requesting approval of Resolution 2024-06. So this is approving Clay County to enter into So this is approving Clay County to enter into MinDOT agreement 105 3983 with the state of Minnesota and the city of Moorhead. So this has been an agreement that the city and county and MinDOT have been working on for quite a while. So we had to first get the BNSF agreement signed before this agreement could come forward. So basically this is just outlining our construction costs, which is capped at 1.5 million and then just kind of laying out responsibilities in the future because obviously it is a county state aid highway.
Discussion, Commissioner Campbell.
Mr. Chair, I guess I'd like to just, you know, for the public who might be watching this and might be asking questions, why is the county involved with this? It's an internal city project, uh, for one thing, 11th Street North is also a county road that goes right up to Center Avenue. And so we do, you know, we are a, a partner in this and, and, um, you know, this is a, a long sought after project and a very important project and I, for us to be part of it, I think is a good thing. And we have been able to put this in our five-year plan from a financial standpoint to help pay for it. So, um, and, and, you know, I think, you know, I think there's good work done by Justin and, and the city on our behalf because, uh, at one point in time, the railroad was kind of insisting that we own those bridges. And through the negotiations between the city, the county and MinDOT, we were able to successfully have the railroad own those bridges, correct?
That's correct.
So, so that really, that, that's a significant issue that, that was important for us to resolve. And so, and I, Justin, you, you played a part in that, so I wanted to thank you for that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think it's worth mentioning that this, this is a project that's important and it's not a Moorhead project. This is a county project by virtue of the road and by virtue of the, the fact that every citizen who is a citizen of Moorhead is also a citizen of Clay County. And this benefits a number of our citizens directly. I think all of them indirectly and meets an obligation we have to maintain part of that roadway. So I appreciate the work that Justin's put in on this, Dr. Zimmerman and everybody that for years has been lobbying to get this thing through. So it's a good day for us. Any other con- oh.
I just want to comment. I mean, we've been talking about this a long time, but I've been getting questions from people, what stores go or what stores, you know, what's going to stay, what's going to have to go? And, you know, I don't know if we can put out some sort of publication, whatever, some news, our newspaper that we can tell them what's going to happen with this 11th Street. I know we've got a big diagram showing how to, how it's going to go, but it doesn't explain anything.
I could, uh.
Stays and what doesn't.
So MinDOT's been handling all the negotiations as far as right of way and businesses. I can ask if they have a map that kind of shows that.
Okay.
Yeah. And Mr. Chair and Mr. Commissioner Gross, I, you know, I think, and, you know, I think that's a lot of, you see that on social media a lot too, that people are saying, well, boy, this building's going now and this building's going now and, and it looks like we're losing several businesses in that, on that corridor, which we are.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but at the same point in time, I, I think the, you know, I think when this is done, the future is bright from an e-commerce, from a commerce standpoint, that there's going to really be new opportunities, um, in the city of Moorhead and in that major corridor. So although there's, there's, um, you know, and some of those are longstanding businesses, I think of the Reardon business that was right there that, that is going to no longer be there and I'm at, and others, many others. Uh, the gas station, that's right there on the corner of First and, you know, there, those are already shut down, but, um, but hopefully, you know, when this is done, we'll see, uh, new development be able to happen and I'm, I'm quite confident that it will. But, but I do, I think you're right, Frank. I think there's a lot of people that, that are uncertain. I, I just saw, somebody asked me the other day, where dollar, the dollar tree is going to go, you know, and I, I don't know.
It's just an idea. I mean, we see these places closed down. We don't know whether it's because of 11th Street underpass or did they just leave or what the situation is, you know? I just would like to know, I guess, just to get an answer to them.
Well, there's a public safety consideration too, uh, with fire station right there, the, uh, police headquarters and sheriff's office. It, there's always been an issue trying to get from north to south. And I think this is going to give us one more artery to, to have ready access for ambulance, fire and police services. It's going to be, it's going to be of real value to our community too. So I think it's a, it's a, it's a good plan.
Well, I, I think from a public safety standpoint, this is the most significant underpass project that Moorhead will ever undertake, you know, from a public safety standpoint.
Yeah, I just got back from our county engineer annual conference and Shiloh, the district engineer for District Four actually brought up that this will be the most expensive underpass in Minnesota. So it's pretty significant from that standpoint too. It's going to be an impressive project when it's done.
For all the local legislatures who might have been involved with this, I think, I thank you, should go out to them too, because I think ultimately this is going to be a huge win for Moorhead and Clay County.
With that, Mr. Chair, if there's no other comments, I would, I would move resolution 2024 dash 06.
Second. Have motion, second for this resolution. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Passes.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I might, before Justin leaves. Okay, thank you. Uh, right now MetroCog, as you know, because you're on the Transportation Technical Committee, is in the process of collecting data for the Regional Comprehensive Safety Action Plan. And, and I know you've provided feedback, but in, in looking at that, there really is a lack of comments from Clay County broadly.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and felt that, you know, our, our highway workers see so many of those areas that there might be blind spots or traffic problems.
Mm-hmm.
And I think it might just be helpful to reach out to them and just ask if they have feedback to provide that.
Sure.
Understanding that we know internally what it would be, but as MetroCog looks for what the planning for the future will be, I think it's really important to make sure that Clay County is represented as broadly as possible in that survey.
Yep. Can do that.
Anything else? Thanks.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, Justin. Hey, next on the agenda, we have, uh, update from the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources highlighting activities in Clay County.
I, Mr. Chair, I don't believe that they are here yet because they're running pretty early.
So would.
Do you need to wait on, uh, on others? We can take, we can take a break.
We can.
There were several coming from the midges.
Okay. Okay.
Okay.
We're early.
Mr. Chair, we do have the addition too. We could maybe handle.
Yep.
Sure do.
Darren, you're up. A request approval for a 2023 pay equity report.
All right. Thank you for fitting me in today. Um, every three years, the state requires us to submit what's called a pay equity report and it's due by the January 31st. And because I had a little bit of a technical difficulty uploading our report, um, I finally got it uploaded yesterday and then I realized that we don't have a board meeting next week. So I have to have this approved by the board and signed by the chair, um, when I submit it. So that's the reason I, I had to have a, an agenda, uh, agenda item. The first page that you see there is just the page that I will fill out and I'll need the chair to sign off on that page. And then when I submit it, it's just making sure that the board is aware of the, uh, the report itself. Um, on the next page is just a letter stating, uh, all the changes that have been made to the positions, uh, within the last three years. So that's, uh, um, every three, every three years, we have to notify them what changes we made in our positions. So that's the, uh, the fourth page there. The real page, um, that you, you'll be looking at is what's called the compliance report. And what, how we do this is, um, the pay equity determines to make sure that, that male jobs and female jobs are being paid accordingly. Um, so I take all of the employees and what their position is, and then if they're male, female, and then feed that into the, the website. And then it kicks out whether that position is mostly male, mostly female, or a balanced position, a balanced position. And then by that, I also have to add the, the points per position. And we get the points from the, um, the wage, that, how I, how I determine what, what grade a position should be. And this matrix was designed, uh, during the Bjorkland Consulting Market Study back in 2009, 2010, I believe is when it was. So every position has a number associated for points. And so those points are then looked at and then we also include the minimum and the maximum wage for that position. So as you see, we have 138 positions in the county that we were, we're reporting on. And, um, 45 of those positions are male dominated classes, 81 are female classes and 12 are balanced classes. So what, what ends up happening is I put all this information into their website and it does this huge calculation. The calculation is like six pages long. I will be honest with you, I don't even understand how they come up with these calculations. But the thing that you're looking at that is most important is where it says this statistical analysis test and it says underpayment ratio of 120. That is very good because, uh, if you're below 80, that means you're out of compliance with pay equity. So what it looks at is they take that point system for that position and let's say, uh, a social worker, and I'm just making these points up, but a social worker has, uh, uh, 500 points and that's a grade 18. And then another position that's male dominated, let's say deputies, let's say they're at 550 points, but they're at grade, let's say they're grade 20, then that would be the disparity that they would show that that's not, that's not pay equitable because both positions have about the same number of points, but the minimum and maximums are way off. So that's a short explanation to a very complicated calculation that they do. So, uh, long story short, we are very much in compliance with the pay equity. If you look at this, uh, chart right here, the goal is to be right along that predicted pay line. And as you can see, uh, we are very close to, to that, that line. I can tell you that when I first took over and it, and I looked at a couple that were, that we did before the market study in 2009, 2010, these dots were all over the place. So it's very good and very important that we do a market study that brings all of this back into, uh, compliance with pay equity. So other than that, um, I'm open for questions.
Questions for Darren.
My only comment would be that as a dishterr explanation of what's going on, I'd make a motion to reapprove this equity report.
We have, have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Hey, Darren?
Hey, thank you. And I'll have you sign it after the board meeting.
Okay. We still need a couple of minutes. We're running ahead, so we'll take a, a short five-minute break. Whoop, excuse.
Nothing. I was going to say we can do committee reports too, but whatever. If you want to take a break, that's fine.
Take a five-minute break. And we have our friends from the DNR here. Update on Minnesota Department of Natural Resources highlighting activities in Clay County. And Teresa Ebenge?
You are so close. I believe it's Ebengay.
Well, there's three ways.
Ebengay, very good.
Ebengay.
Ebengay, yeah.
Well, there's three ways to pronounce mine, so I take any of them. Somebody gets close, I'm happy.
All right. Well, Chairman, thank you so much. Commissioners, thank you so much for allowing the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources to be here today. Um, again, my name is Teresa Ebengay. I am the, um, regional director for the Northwest region of the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources. Um, my, I oversee all seven divisions of the DNR in the whole Northwest corner of the state and I also represent, um, the commissioner's office out here in the state. So today, um, basically what I am doing is going around to each one of the counties in, um, the, the area that, um, I serve and introducing myself, wanting to just get to know you a little bit, um, to have just a very, you know, informational and, and informal chat with y'all, see what kind of issues and concerns and opportunities that you may have, um, and just to give you a little bit more information about us. So with that, if you're okay, I would like to introduce the staff that I have with.
Sure.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Eric Antonason. I work for the Division of Ecological and Water Resources. I'm a district manager based in Burgess Falls.
Rob Baden, I'm the area wildlife supervisor based out of Detroit Lakes.
Good morning. My name is Carrie Ross. I serve as the regional planner out of the midges.
All right. So thank you again. Um, I see that you do have the sheet that we have provided and I'm not going to, um, read it all. You can read that yourself, but I did want to touch on a couple of different things on here. And then after that, I will open it up for any questions that you may have. Um, so we do not have a very large footprint in this county, um, only about 2% of the county base here. Um, in 2023, we did do payment in lieu of taxes of around 83, um, almost $84,000. Um, and the state lands managed here by DNR are a little over 12,000 acres. We have one aquatic management area, seven native prairie banks, eight scientific and natural areas, one state park, Buffalo River, three water access sites, 19 wildlife management areas, about 193 miles of Granton and aid snowmobile trails and a little over five miles of, um, OHV trails. Um, one of our premier parks here, Buffalo River State Park, hosted over 126,000 visitors this last year and contributed over mil- $3 million to the local economy. We work very closely with Moorhead Public Services on water levels in both the Buffalo and the Moorhead aquifers. Um, we do quite a bit with our scientific and natural areas program. We have a Felton Prairie stewardship plan, um, and we collaborate with U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service on collecting over 6,400 pounds of high-quality seed, um, for, for public land restoration. Um, a couple of the other things, again, like I said, our SNA program is alive and well here in this county. Um, we also collaborate quite closely with the Wild Rice Watershed District, um, for several flood damage reduction, uh, projects here, um, including enhancing, uh, the Goose Prairie Wildlife Management Area to not only improve the wildlife quality, uh, habitat, but also to provide flood hazard and flood damage reduction, um, flows so that those, those, uh, runoffs do not get to the, to the Red River here. Um, we also have worked with a Buffalo Red Watershed District on 18 miles of channel restoration, more flood, flood damage reduction and water quality improvements. Um, and then some of our opportunities and challenges that we have, um, one that you probably know well of is our chronic wasting disease in the deer population. There was an incident north of Moorhead here where, um, there was a positive for chronic wasting disease. So we have, um, a surveillance zone here, uh, just north of here in, in the deer, um, permit area to ensure that we know and understand what is happening with chronic wasting disease in the area and to hopefully curtail it if we do find it. Um, and then the other thing that we also work very closely with is we have some calcareous fens, especially along the beach ridges, and we want to make sure that they do not, um, have further degradation. Um, so we're working closely with that. So with that, I'll just open it up and see if you have any questions.
Commissioner Campbell.
Thank you. Uh, welcome, Teresa. Uh, I'm just curious, um, Clay County, along with Norman County and Polk County are in the process of establishing a water district, a rural water district. I'm assuming that at some point in time, uh, through this process, a judicial process that we're, we're starting right now. And at some point in time, I'm sure that, um, the DNR is going to probably be looking at, at what could be or might, might be or might not be done. Uh, we, you know, at some point in time, we're going to be looking at what water resources are available. available to help, you know, provide water to the rural areas that need it. So I'm just, you know, this is more of just a, maybe a question, have you heard of what we're doing to this point in time? And if the DNR were to have questions, I guess we would like to be able to work with you in that regard, is to help answer any questions that you may have. It's a significant project that's going to take many, many years to reach its goal, but I'm just curious if you've heard at all about that.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner. And yes, I have heard. A part of my duties is I am one of the members on the Red River Basin Commission.
Oh, sure.
And so as a member of the Red River Basin Commission.
You've heard.
They have, yep, they have given us presentations. And yes, I am very, very interested in this project. I am interested on where the water may be coming from and, you know, how we can assist in that because there will be some regulatory things that we do need to do with this. With that, I don't know, Eric, have you heard or been a part of this yet?
Yeah, if you, and then just push the button so you get a green light there.
Teresa, I think you probably know more about the project than I do. I've heard it mentioned. I know that we do work with rural water districts elsewhere.
Marshall Polk has one.
Yeah, I think the one I'm more familiar with is up north of Crookston.
Marshall Polk.
Yep.
Is that the one?
Yeah, that's Marshall Polk, yeah.
Okay. More so, I'm involved in groundwater appropriation types, surface water appropriation types of work. And I know that, I'll just say generally, the whole western side of our part of the state is less groundwater-rich than other parts of the state. So we're very interested in what's happening. Currently, we're in conversations with Morehead Public Services about their water, where they're getting it from, and future water uses. So absolutely, my staff and other parts of our division will be very interested in hearing more about this as it goes forward.
Yeah, you know, as we did this, one of the real concerns that we had from Clay County on behalf of our citizens in rural areas, there's an awful lot of arsenic in the groundwater, and that's not the healthiest thing. And it doesn't meet the, there's certain areas that don't meet the minimum requirements or whatever the counts are. And so there, you know, there's some concern there, and so we're trying to do what we can to help resolve that. And then, of course, one of the issues is, you know, just like you said, Teresa, where's the water going to come from?
Right.
You know, but I, you know, hopefully, we can all work together to find those solutions, you know, that can benefit, you know, we have a lot of rural people, Commissioner Mojo is one of them, that lives in a rural area, that the water is, probably doesn't, isn't the best quality that you could have.
Yes, definitely. We would love to work, the earlier the better. So, you know, anytime that we can work on this, the sooner that we can be a part of those conversations, be a part of any working groups that you have, the better. We do have, you know, hydrologists on staff, both Roger Hempel and Stephanie Clam, that can assist with, you know, helping to locate maybe the best way to look at the groundwater aquifers that we have. We have a whole groundwater aquifer staff in our central office that can also assist in looking at where that water availability is, what type of water quality it is. We work very closely with MPCA. Teresa Haugen from MPCA and I work very closely together.
I didn't mean to take all the time here, but that's a significant project that we're in the early stages of, and if you don't mind, I'm probably going to give your name to, so right now, we're, we just met yesterday as a committee, and I think the legislative process is going to probably be filed with, I think it's going to be filed here in Clay County Courts to establish this West Central District. And so in that process, I think it's probably a good time to make sure that you're up to speed, and so I'll probably give you the names of both the attorney who's doing that as well as the, and then once that's done, one of the main things that we're looking for is an engineer's report.
Yes.
And, you know, so I think AE2S, I'm sure you've heard of AE2S, they're, I think we're hopeful that they're going to be the ones that are, that would be designated by the court to do that engineering study. And at that point in time, I think that would be, your expertise in where the water is could be real beneficial.
Yes, definitely. And I can leave my card with you all today.
Sure.
I have some here that I can hand out. And yes, please get ahold of me, and, you know, we'll make sure that the right staffer in the room.
Okay. And I, just one follow-up to, and I know there's, there certainly is some legislative support on this. We have, both at the, both at the state and the federal level, very interested in what we're looking at doing here. So, but we'll, I'm glad that you're willing to look at this early.
Yes, definitely. Like I said, the earlier we can coordinate, the better. That way, we can, you know, ensure everyone is aware of what the situations are with the groundwater, with our surface water, and hopefully find an appropriate source.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments?
Yeah.
Frank?
I think the problem, I don't know how much, I don't know how much you're going to be involved in the water district and stuff like that, but I think our problem right now is that people aren't aware of the water quality in the area that we're in right now because 39% of Clay County has arsenic in their wells. Norman County is 43%. You know, so it's a, it's a big problem, and people I don't think are aware of it yet, and we have to get pretty serious about bringing that water back in here, and whatever cooperation we need to get from you would be good.
Yes, definitely. And we, again, the quality part, the arsenic, that usually falls within MPCA. However, we work very closely with them. Water quantity in this area is also an issue.
Yes, it is.
So, you know, especially around Crookston area and south, Polk, Marshall, they're already having some out-of-water issues, and so we do need to be careful with where those wells are tapped.
If I can, so did you have, have you had any experience? I know that, that the city of climax has, they have a water source, and it's actually coming from North Dakota. And it's, you know, it's piped, that comes over, and I'm assuming that you're aware of that. You know, there is the potential for some regional sources of water coming from areas like that, too, as opposed to, you know, like you said, the west-central part of the state is, doesn't have an abundance of groundwater. That's good. So, and I know that that's one area, I think, that they are looking at as a resource. So just, so you're aware of that.
Thank you. Did you want to say anything?
No, I really don't know much about the climax situation, but I do know that there are, you know, a few different communities that take, Morehead being the prime one, that take water from the Red River. So, you know, in addition to the groundwater resources that are there, you know, folks do typically look at other sources, surface water being the main one, and the Red River being the main surface water source that we have in this part of the state, so.
Yeah, and we're also aware of the, what is it, the Red River water supply that's coming from the Missouri River over.
Yes.
And that that may be a potential source. Again, cross-boundary water supplies like that coming into Minnesota, there may be some permitting that we will definitely need to look at in those situations.
That's good, and I'm glad that's why we will have you involved early.
Yes, exactly, exactly. Because, you know, with that supply, I know, so, a little bit of my history, I used to work for the Federal Bureau of Reclamation. So I'm very familiar with the water supply out in western North Dakota and bringing those water supplies over here. I'm also very familiar with biota transfer issues. So that is something that Minnesota takes very seriously.
Sure, yeah.
Anything further? We appreciate you coming.
Well, thank you very much. And if at any time you would like us to come back and talk about any issues, I have an open door, open phone, you know, policy. I will leave you my cards here today, and please feel free to give me a contact at any time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Committee reports, and we'll start with Commissioner Mojo.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last week, I attended the Clay County Chamber Leader Roundtable that was hosted here at the courthouse. We did have the opportunity to meet and discuss items of mutual interest. We discussed legislative opportunities and identify the regional priorities, and discussed how we can leverage them in the upcoming legislative session. The next day, we had the FM, Fargo-Morehead-West Fargo Chamber Policy, Public Policy Committee here. Huge thank you to Jacqueline and Joe for getting the room ready. We had a very full room filled with all of the commissioners as well as all of our local elected leadership. I really do appreciate all of them for making time to hear the conversation and the concerns from those of us here. Felt it was a really good opportunity to inform them of our legislative priorities. There are four main areas that are the legislative priorities for the chamber this year. The one being comprehensive workforce solutions, two, quality accessible affordable childcare, three, building a community for the future, and four, business and community vitality. Clay County has items within all of those subsets that are very important to us, that we will continue to help advocate for. The next day, I attended, or actually, that day rather, I attended the MetroCog Committee meeting. We had the election of the chair and the vice chair cast, and Clay County's will serve in those capacities, which Clay County will serve in the vice president or vice chair. We voted on the Transportation Improvement Program amendments. We had a long discussion on the funding designation for transportation alternatives projects, carbon reduction program projects, and Surface Transportation Block grant projects. Those are all ranked in regards to how the community input sees those areas and the Transportation Technical Committee. And then we also ranked them based on the pool of funding, and as you know, that's all subject to local matches as well. The next day, I attended the Lakes and Prairies Community Action Meeting, a lot of information there. One item that I'll highlight is really the board survey feedback. We talked about that. That board is made up of some pretty well-connected folks in the community, so it's really important to hear their feedback based on the function of that board. But we do have several openings there. I've said before at this, we're really looking for folks to serve in those capacities, particularly from the Wilkin County area. When Commissioner Hovland died last year, it really left a hole of presence there. So if you know anyone in the Wilkin County area that would be willing to serve in that capacity, please forward the information there. And then Clay County does have an opening as Representative Keeler did step aside from that position due to her commitments at the state level. Commissioner Kravenoff was also there, so he can update further. Yesterday, I attended the Lakeland Mental Health Board Meeting. We had updates from the Otter Tail Collaborative Funding. They're currently looking at a needs assessment for a family resource center to see if that would help address some of the needs that they're seeing in the community. Looking at the access indicators and availability for appointments, all of their site-wide appointments are continuing to be offered within a week. That's something that's been challenging to make sure they're keeping up to date on. So nice to see that the Morehead site does have two- and three-day opening availabilities for appointments. And then had a legislative discussion on how Lakeland is going to continue to help be part of a solution in regards to mental health acuity, our proposal that we're working with Representative Keeler on, seeing if they could be part of the solution with solutions and other providers that are within our community. And I believe that does conclude my report, but I just want to again state that to have Senator Johnson, Senator Kubeck, Representative Joy, Representative Keeler, and Representative Keel all part of a dialogue here really shows a huge effort of importance, bipartisan support. To be present is the most important thing, so I appreciate them for their time, and also the chamber for hosting such a well-attended event. That concludes my reports.
Thank you. Commissioner Campbell?
Thank you. Thursday, January 18th, we had our West Central Regional Juvenile Meeting. We went over the 2023 statistics and the 2023 budget. To date, it won't be finalized probably till March. We are looking at, right now, we probably, we're, right now, we're sitting with revenues over projections, that's on paper now, just over half a million dollars, but there's still about 10% of revenue that's yet to come in. So we're probably hopeful that we're going to be in that same range of a million to $1.1 million revenues over expenditures, again, for 2023, of which will hopefully then, that will be decided, recommended by the full membership in July. But it certainly looks like it's going to be opportunities for us to maintain a low annual bed price per bed to keep that down. Then James gave a programming overview. We had some new members there, or new representatives, not new representatives of other organizations there. So he gave an update on program review to them, just some of the things that we do in that facility, and then gave an update on the building updates. You know, we're putting in a new gym floor and a new ceiling there. Both of those are on, being worked on now. And I think, just to shout out to Josh, who, Josh is the Director of the Non-Secure, but I believe he went in there and individually, he took out that old gym floor, and, you know, and saved a significant amount of money by doing that. So really hats off to him for his efforts in that regard. And then at that point in time, I did have to leave for another meeting, and Commissioner Ebinger took over for me as chair that day. But I did also, just for the board's information, I have brought up for consideration moving forward, the idea of having body cams for our staff within that facility. I think, you know, with the day and age that we're in right now, I think it's, can be real beneficial from our standpoint. And so I asked, I asked James to check with Department of Corrections on that to make sure there's no issues there, and it, and he came back to me, and it sounds like Hanipan County is already doing that right now.
No, they're looking to.
Or they're looking to do it. I thought, I thought he said that they were doing it on a trial basis or something, but anyway, so I brought that up, and I, you know, I think it's a, it's an opportunity for us to probably invest in that equipment, you know, while we're having the revenues over expenditures that we're having, as opposed to trying to do that maybe when the financial position isn't quite as good, so, or might not be as quite as good, so. But anyway, I'll, and Commissioner Ebinger might have more to add on that. Then I, that same day, then I went to Fergus Falls for the Lakes Country Service Cooperative Meeting, and they did a board reorganization with the election of officers, and the slate of officers remained the same as the prior year. We did get some insurance updates, cooperative purchasing connection board meeting update. And then we also got an update on the 18 Online Concurrent Report to the Legislature. That 18 Online is obviously where you can have, high school students can work through MSUM to be obtaining college credits while they're still in high school, and that is proving to be very successful. And so they also have a teacher mentoring grant that's out there, and that's, that's to get these teachers qualified to be able to give those college course credits. So that's, those two things combined are really, I think, really, and the number of Clay County kids, it's a significant number who are involved in that program. Then on Monday... Then on Monday, as I mentioned with the DNR here, we had our West Central Regional Water Group Work Group. And at that, we, you know, we spent quite a bit of time talking about the, we had a background presentation and, and the build-out and funding application updates. There's two that are out there with Felton and.
Norman County.
Norman County. And, and then we had several other discussions. We were, we, there was, they went over what is currently in the governor's capital budget. We were fortunate to have with us that day Senator Johnson was there in person. And then we had Representative, then we had Ben Lean was representing Senator Klobuchar's office. He was there online and as well as Jordan Schrader.
Jordan Spieth, yeah.
Jordan Schrader, isn't it?
Mr. Schrader.
Yeah. I, I think that's a, he's, he represents Senator Tina Smith. They were there. And then Jim Joy was also online, so that we were thankful for, to have them there. And then I think we're, like I said, we're getting close. I think there's, they're going to be coming back to our full boards here probably in the next two to three weeks now with a new resolution for us to pass that outlines our territory. And I, I think there's been some behind-the-scenes meeting with, with Steve and some others regarding, and Moorhead Public Service, defining Moorhead Public Service concern and territory that they want to have. And I think we're, you know, so I think that proposal is in. There was a brief discussion about that with the full group, and they were in full support of, there's two entities that, that we will really want to work together with in that regard, and that's Moorhead Public Service. And then it's the, what we talked about earlier is the Marshall Polk Regional Water District that serves not all of Polk County, but, and so they, you know, there's concern that we don't want to infringe on that territory of theirs. So, so working together with them to establish this final district. And then I believe the intent is, and I know our county attorney and the other county attorneys have talked about which would be the best county to file the proceeding in. And I think based on staff availability and, and number of courts, I think it's been determined that it'll probably be filed in Clay County. And so that, I think that could be happening in the next, I think they said maybe the next two to three weeks that could happen. We, we first need to have the resolution come before us. But, uh, let's see, I believe that includes my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Gross.
Last Tuesday, we had the PIC Committee, Personnel Issues Committee. Most of those items were covered today. Three of the four aren't. I mean, one wasn't the detox Senator Office there. They're going to come up with a new organizational structure. We're going to hear about more of that when they, they're trying to include the new building that's going up and some of the new staff that they're going to have to offer to cover that stuff. So we'll hear more of that in the future. After that, we had the Clay County Criminal Justice Advisory Committee, advisor meeting. Big thing there was Janelle Chaney, who's been around for a long time. Has been going to move on to another position. She'll still be around because she's going to be, her new job is going to cover Clay County too. So, but she's going to take on a new position. We'll have someone else taking over her job more than likely. So, other than that, they talked about the driving while intoxicated court that's being organized. Judge Rosenfeld talked to us about that getting going. They got the grant money, or applying for $150,000 in grant money to get that going now. So hopefully that'd be another court along with the drug court and stuff, and Veterans Court that's going to be helping out people. And again, and then, of course, I went to the Fargo Moorhead Chamber Policy, and I have to thank you what Commissioner Mojo said. I mean, I was impressed with all the people that were here and talking. I mean, the unfortunate thing was that we didn't have more time, I think. And it's just, I mean, we're limited to one hour. It's just, with all those people there, I think there was more questions to present than, but I was glad that they all represented the senators there. That was, that was really good to have to show their interest in what's going on around here. And then yesterday, went to the West Central Water District. And then other than what Commissioner Campbell covered, I think we really got, I don't know, we got to get the word on something that people in this area got to realize their wells, that there's arsenic in them, you know, because there's 39% of the wells that they tested in Clay County have arsenic, and 43 in Norman County. And it is a serious thing. We got to get the water in here. So, I mean, it's coming. And I know the cities, I mean, climax already has it. Hendon wants it, Felton wants it, Georgetown wants it. They're all, those are people that test their wells often, you know, and they find out that the water quality in our area is getting, is not that great, you know. And we really got to get serious about getting that water coming, coming from somewhere else in Clay County and Norman County. Excuse me, did you have some?
Yeah, well, I, just to follow up, and I, you know, and I think what, what we've learned, learned from the North Central or Northeast, whatever, in, in North Dakota that's providing the water to the northern part that I talked about, what, what's been learned in establishing water districts is once it gets established and is that, is that water starts to move along, then all of a sudden, everybody starts taking an interest because it gets closer to them with the availability for source. But I, I do agree that there needs to, you know, I don't know if people in rural areas are testing their water. I, you know, because there, there's certainly some areas that exceeds the numbers that, the numbers that they say are safe. So.
I think Holy Township is already working on it. I think they have some concern about their water. And also the White Dirt Nation, they, they're looking at probably, I don't know whether they're going to join our group or not, or whether they're going to get into another group. I mean, they too are concerned about water quality, you know. So I'm just, I'm just trying to make people aware. There's some water problems, you know, and test your water wells and make sure they're, you got good water coming in, you know. So, and I think that covers my meetings.
Thank you. Commissioner Kravenoff?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My first meeting was last Tuesday, right after a commission meeting. I did make it over to the HRA, as the liaison now from Clay County. A lot for me to learn about their business over there. But we did do a quick overview of the number of projects they have. There's quite a list. And then there was a deeper discussion on what's ahead on our 2024 planning discussion. And then I appreciate their flexibility. In April, we moved the starting times to the third, or the meeting to the third Thursday on, at 9:30 rather, and Tuesday. So, and I can make it. So that was very gracious of them. Later that day, I was at CAP LP and the Finance Committee reviewing our financial positions as it ended in 2023, and as we transition the funds for proper bookkeeping into 2024. And of course, we have federal audits and state audits with that organization because the complexity of the funding sources they have. And let's see, the next day, on Wednesday, I had the monthly meeting for the Historical and Cultural Society. There again are, in finance, we did our year-end discussions in good financial shape. Want to give a shout out that we raised money internally, $3,000, that we could have a match for Giving Hearts Day, which is February 8. So I'll just think of when you're giving that day, thinking of the Historical and Cultural Society. We also, I had one board member that had been, I believe it was 15 years or right in that range, 13, 14, 15, Joe Neal, who is off the board now, and we have a new member coming in. And I don't know that name, but when they come, I'll let you know. That was mostly about, that was most of what we talked at that discussion and new items for 2024. The chamber event, again, been echoed a few times. I, I think those discussions are, they're one of my favorite things. And I have all the legislators that just, it's great. And, and to have that accessibility to our local legislators is to have their ears, is something good, and we need to continue. If I can follow up a little bit with Commissioner Mona Joe's comments and one of the priorities, dealing with the higher acuity priority that we have. We have some upcoming meetings that are going to be coming as we move closer to the, trying to fit a couple of those in before session starts. So we'll be having deeper discussions with that here in the next couple of weeks. On the, also on the 18th, later, I too was at the MetroCog Meeting. And again, Commissioner Mojo is our vice chair this year. Other things she already mentioned in detail, so not much more to report on that. And then that evening, back to Lakes and Prairie Community Action Partnership, we did have our full board meeting. Those, we have our same board as far as officers, with myself being vice chair. We did have a deeper dive along with the board assessment that Senator, sorry, not Senator yet. Commissioner Mojo talked. We did review our mission, our mission, vision, and core values and took some time on that, which is always good to do. And there again, they raised $10,000, I believe it was, or 15. It was a great number of dollars that they got for their match on Giving Hearts Day. So give great consideration to CAP LP and Giving Hearts Day. They do great things for just people living under the poverty level, Head Start, homelessness, you know, helping with assistance and assistance for keeping people in their homes and as well as tax services, just abundant amount of work that they do. And then yesterday, I had Cascade Food Partners Steering Committee, once again, kind of that new planning getting, taking shape for 2024. So there were a lot of discussions and, and the incredible amount of, of demand that is becoming on our food shelves. And there's a hunger study coming out through Great Plains Food Bank that we'll be receiving and looking at, and it will show. But Janice, who runs that, she just talked about how the demands on the food shelf has increased dramatically in the last year. In fact, she just pointed out that Great Plains is serving out a million pounds of food a month now, which is incredible, and that's an all-time high. So that, that includes, concludes my report.
Thank you. On the, excuse me, on the 16th, I attended the PIC Meeting. Commissioner Gross has covered that well. The following day, or no, later that day, the Clay County Criminal Justice Advisory Committee, which Commissioner Gross also covered and did a good job of. But I do want to thank Janelle Chaney for the years of work she's done. I know she's moving, being transferred to another job in a part of the state she, she and her husband plan on settling in retirement time. So it's a good position for her. I think she's been valuable to us. If we get a replacement that's as good. And the DWI Court is proceeding. It's funded. It, hopefully, it'll be operational by January 2025. But they've gotten the grant funding for it, and now it's a matter of applying for a DPS grant that will operate it. And things are looking good on that. I also attended the, or I attended a West Central Regional Juvenile pre-meeting on the 17th with myself, Commissioner Campbell, and Steve Larson. We just discussed some of the things that were coming up since Commissioner Campbell wasn't going to be able to be there for the entire meeting. The following day, I attended Chamber Public Policy Committee Meeting. Again, that's been covered well by Commissioner Mojo. But it, I do want to express my gratitude to Senator Johnson, Senator Kupchak, Representative Keel, Representative Keeler, and Representative Joy. They all came. They all participated. And again, the only change I'd like to see in it is a little more time because we had great attendance by the business community. And I know there were a lot of questions and discussions that kind of didn't, didn't make it. Later that day, I attended the West Central Regional Juvenile Center Meeting. Commissioner Campbell has covered that well. Hit all the items that we did there that were significant. Later that day, I attended the Red River Regional Dispatch Center. The meeting we held had an executive session to discuss some of the HR issues that are coming through on this search for a new director. We've got three of the applicants that were moving forward to web-based interviews. They're not finalists. The openings are still open. And as people meet the qualifications as determined by the Personnel Committee that works on the Executive Committee, as they move forward, we will determine whether we need to do additional preliminary screening interviews remotely with an eye towards getting some finalists identified and bringing them in, into town for interviews. All HR personnel are represented. Darren's representing Clay County, Cass County HR Director, and the Moorhead, well, Moorhead HR Director and the Fargo HR Director. Jill is in charge of basically the search because under our memorandum of understanding, Fargo handles the HR issues for the Dispatch Center. So we've got some good people on board. We have a lot of participation. We've had a good number of applications and three people who show some potential so far. So it's proceeding well. Hope we can get a director sometime towards the end of February or maybe end of March will be able to complete all these things according to the plan that we've laid out. Later that day, I attended Lake Agassy Regional Library Finance Committee Board Meeting, followed by the regular board meeting. Pretty much standard business. Finance Committee, we forwarded the final budget, which was ultimately passed by the, the, the Board at Large. And we covered some general annual things, list of authorized financial institutions, and reviewed our designated funds. The board meeting, we welcomed new trustee Tim Menard from Crookston, administered the oath of office. They endorsed all the things that have been financed, that have been forwarded by the Finance Committee. On the following day, on the 19th, I attended remotely an AMC board orientation for board members and alternates. The Executive Director of AMC, Julie Ring, conducted it. It was informative, covered a lot of things, even though I've been an alternate for a year that I was unaware of. So it was time well spent. And that completes my report. Yes?
If I, if I can, I go back. I didn't, you know, in regards to that chamber meeting, and I, I got there late, but I, you know, the, a couple of the key takeaways there is there, there wasn't enough time. And I just want to remind everybody that this Friday, we're going to be having our intergovernmental retreat. This is going to be my 32nd one there. This is going to be my 32nd one there. And the way those retreats used to happen is they were hosted by the chamber. And they were all day long events. And as a matter of fact, they even went into Saturday morning. And Saturday morning was reserved for the full morning was for legislatures because some we weren't sure what they could get back. But the but the fact of the matter is, is for some reason, we've gotten away from that and and we've gotten more to certainly the part of that was we wanted to make sure that Clay County, Moorhead, the school districts within close to the, you know, on the western part of the county anyway, that that can collaborate in certain areas would be able to do so. But when you look at, you know, when you look at what the some of the key issues were and Commissioner Mojo named four of them, and all of them have a direct impact on our businesses in terms of their being part of this. And and I'm hoping that sometime we can get back to having the the chamber be part of this process because it's the issues that we're facing are critical, that we have both public and private involvement to solve the problems. And we can sit there and we can have these intergovernmental meetings and we can sit there and talk to each other how much we need childcare. It's something that's not new to us. We're going to do it Friday. But but at the same point in time, we don't have a lot of the the people present that should be there to help in that regard. So I raise that issue with the idea in mind that that I'm glad that you all recognize the significance of that meeting that we had with all those local legislatures and they were there and the significance of the chamber being there. And the chamber, by the way, is they I'm sure most of them that were there were Moorhead businesses that were had had an interest in Moorhead or Clay County businesses that have an interest in what goes on here. And I, you know, I think if we're going to tackle these problems, we need to get back to that. And anyway, I'm just kind of on a little soapbox there, but but I I just I think it needs to I think we just need to get back in that direction. If we're going to solve problems, we've got to include everybody in the way to resolve it, so.
I think it's worth mentioning that we're looking at a period of growth, hopefully, for our county. I mean, we know the county's growing. We know Moorhead is growing. I think the chamber has stepped up and done a very good job of of helping us in our working with the legislature. And this was an example of it. The fact it went long enough is a an indication that it's good what we've got and we want more. But we're entering into a period of growth where we need really need to be able to focus on our relationship with with St. Paul, on our relationship with the legislature and legislative issues. Chamber has stepped up on that. I think downtown Moorhead has stepped up on that. When we look at our relationships with organizations that serve us, I think we're well, we're well intended in trying to be regional, but the Minnesota side is something we really need to put some focus on in job development here. And I think the chamber is a good resource for us. So I'm supportive of anything we can do to enhance that relationship. I know Commissioner Mojo has worked closely with them on some issues, and this is something I think is is imperative as fast as things are breaking over on this side of the river, not just over on the other ones, so.
I might add too, back in in some of those days, our registrations were probably they probably exceeded 100 for those for those retreats. And I don't know what our most recent count is for this Friday, but I'm guessing it's probably half that. So, yeah, could but I mean, but I, you know, I I'm I think we've been averaging maybe 50 or 60, and I think we're missing something.
Any other comments or observations? If not, Steve, I'll pass it to you.
I think, Mr. Chair, last Tuesday, I participated in the PCC Committee that has been addressed. After that afternoon, I met virtually with Stephen Slick from AE2S, Daniel Marks, Attorney from Flattery and Hood, and also Chuck Whiting, Administrator from Polk County on some issues with the water district. On the 17th, participated with Darren and I believe Mr. Leaser was also on board with the MCIT training on open meeting law with the specific focus on the participation or remote participation. And so we hope to have some information on that for the for the board here in the coming weeks. The 17th, as Commissioner Eberger mentioned, I met with Commissioner Campbell and James O'Donnell in regards to the the West Central Regional Juvenile Center upcoming meeting. On the 17th, I also spoke with a concerned citizen who was focused on the impact of the cost to the county and the state in regards to the changing of the flag. On the 17th, I also met virtually with Robert Wilson from Cass County. On the 18th, participated in the the Chamber Policy Committee, which has been well covered. On the 18th, I participated in MCC JPA prep meeting for the upcoming meeting this Thursday. On the 18th, I met with Barnesville City Administrator Jeremy Cassett on a series of county issues, city issues. The 19th, I had the department head evaluation and prepared for two additional evals. On the 22nd, participated virtually from the West Central Regional Water District, which has been covered in detail. Also, that that afternoon, I met with Lori Johnson and Todd Hagan in regards to our bond issue today. Again, with the excitement of a point and a half, just to put that in perspective, we we saved about between $70,000 and $73,000 a year in that in that in that bond payment. So yesterday, also the department had evaluation and and just the IGR has been mentioned. And then just a reminder for our citizens, we do not have board on the 30th because it's a Tuesday. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Ms. Milton, anything for us?
No.
Jackie? Any other business? If not, I'll adjourn. Thank you.